So, let's see, a minute, a second to go. Okay, are we ready, run? Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. All righty, I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Board of Deschutes County Commissioners for August 22nd, 2022. So, there's a lot of twos today.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I know, very interesting. Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, okay, item number one. Chad, would you like to join us?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chad Santola, Director of Solid Waste. For the past two years, we've been working on planning and design work for a new transfer station for our Negas facility up in Redmond, and I'm happy to report that we've, we got very good bids for the project. And we went out to bid in June for the project and had a pretty good response on the advertising. On, we had quite a few upland centers and material suppliers and subcontractors download the bids and had eleven, excuse me, six general contractors download the project bids, the project documents. We have four, four bids, and Kirby Nagelhaus Construction Company is, is recommended as the lowest responsible bidder for the project. So, the, the request for today is to authorize a notice of intent to award to Kirby Nagelhaus for a Negas Transfer Station Improvements Project for a total amount of $16,859,428.
Great, thank you so much for joining us in person.
You're welcome.
There was a bit of a range, what, they were under six, 17 million, and then it went up to almost 24 million, so, between the four bids, but you're happy with that bid?
Absolutely, you know, we, we see high bids occasionally on liner projects, and we've talked to a couple contractors in the past, sometimes they have so much work going on, they'll put an inflated bid in, and if they, they win the project, it ends up being a, you know, very lucrative project for them. I don't think they're seriously expecting to, to win the bid when they're that, that high. Our engineer's estimate was about $18 million for the project, and that, that figure was provided to the plant holders. So, I'm not sure what the thought process with Wildish, the high bidder, was, but the, the other four bids were rela-, excuse me, the other three bids were relatively close in, in dollar amount for, for a project of this size.
It's really nice to see that the bid came in under the engineer's estimate.
That's always a pleasant surprise, absolutely. We, we, we did a revised estimate back in March, and that was when inflation was really hitting us hard, so our, our engineer's estimate went up several million dollars at that point, and perhaps prices are starting to plateau right now.
It's like three quarters of a million less than the estimate, so that's quite significant.
Yeah, again, it was a very good bid, we're, we're quite pleased with it.
So, the, the structure itself was purchased separately, correct? I remember we did that a while ago.
Correct, we did a 10% down payment at the, the time of the, the purchase, and the, the balance of the, the costs will be due on delivery. And I just got an email from the building manufacturer the day they were scheduled to come in, in the first week of October, delivering parts and pieces. So, we, we have, I think that we, the balance due is about 1.2 million on the building itself.
And that's a large metal structure, beams on a truck?
Correct, yeah, yeah, it's all a pre-engineered metal building, that's all assembled in a factory and comes out in pieces, kind of like a giant erector set.
I think that people of Redmond are going to be excited to see the activity happen, and then the flow afterwards, being able to go inside the building.
Yeah, that, that, all, all three of the transfer stations were, were built in the, I think in the 1980s, early 1990s, and they're all suffering from wear and tear in old age. Redmond in particular, that, that site is, is over capacity and is very old and tired at this point. You know, we'll, we'll continue with recycling operations at the existing facility. We, we had originally planned to do improvements for recycling as well, but our, our, our play was much smaller than our appetite for improvements when it comes down to dollars with it.
Well, getting projects delivered right now is the key, especially with these inflationary times, you know, having the engineer's estimate go up, but then have the, seeing the number come down a little, that's, that's positive at this point in time. And these revenues are all through the solid waste enterprise funds, correct?
Uh, well, this, this project actually, is actually bonded. We, we secured a, a full faith and credit obligation bond for, for, for the project, and that includes paying the balance on the, the, the building itself, as well as construction, and there's a contingency with it.
Great. And, and that'll be paid off through franchise fees and, and tipping fees and, and other?
Correct, yeah, yeah, ultimately, it is pay through the, the tip fees for the landfill, yeah.
Move approval of a notice, a notice of intent to award contract for the construction of the Negas Transfer Station Improvements Project to Kirby Nagelhaus Construction Company.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great news. All right, item number two. I believe we have Derek and Andrea, if you guys want to join us for your presentation.
Welcome.
Welcome, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So, we're here today to talk about some revised bylaws and a committee roster. As we've mentioned before, as Whitney's communicated in the past, that two programs are now consolidating for ODOT. One is the statewide transportation improvement fund program, and the other is the special transportation fund. And so, I'll give a little bit of background on those two programs, because they're kind of the same except for the I and the one acronym, but they're really different in terms of their, how long they've been implemented, and as well as kind of their tax base, and what types of transit services for which they're, they're funding. And so, we worked on the first Deschutes County STIF bylaws, which is the, from the 2017 payroll tax. That was in 2019, and so, we had come forth with some bylaws. This was a really new program from ODOT to support transit agencies across Oregon, so at about, I think it was one tenth of one percent of a payroll tax, about it. Everyone who works in Oregon pays about a dollar a week. That goes into fund, that comes to the counties as qualified entity. Those funds are then vetted through an advisory committee process, and then a lot of those funds come to CIT, but they're also open for other partners, nonprofits. You know, for example, we have a van pool program that we pass through funds to commute options to implement, using these stiff dollars. So, they're very flexible, we can use them for local match. And this is the newer program. We had an advisory committee of 11 members and two alternates that we went through a whole process with the, the Board of Commissioners, got that approved. And so, we've had a couple successful rounds of the STIF program. We funded a lot of really great projects, a lot of new vehicle purchases, support for rural services like Route 31 and La Pines and River. We have a new service anticipated to, to launch this, a late summer from Crook River Ranch to Redmond. We can talk about that more if you have questions about that service. Also, two new routes in Bend, Routes 8 and 9, where we're building the bus stops this summer, and hopefully going to be able to implement those services next year when we have more drivers. And also, two new routes in Redmond. So, we've seen the funds get distributed around the county. There's also some shared projects between Crook County, Jefferson County, where we're sharing the cost of vehicles and our community connector services that cross those boundaries. So, they have a similar setup with their bylaws, and they have their own committees. We kind of work together to figure out, you know, what should be Deschutes County share for those services that do cross the border, and we've had a really good collaboration in the past. Our STIF Advisory Committee has, you guys picked really good members, because they've been really, they've participated well, they've participated fully, and they've been engaged, and we've had really good results from the committee members. We have about two members per, or two meetings per year. And we also, so I'll, I'll shift gears here, and we'll talk about the STF program. It's a longer standing program, it's been around with Deschutes County since 2007, so it's a much longer standing program. And those services, those funds are to, to help support transit services specifically for older adults and people with disabilities. So, for example, our Bend Dial-A-Ride, our Sisters Dial-A-Ride, our La Pine Dial-A-Ride, they use those funds to help support those types of services, because that's how, you know, some people with disabilities and older adults tend to use more of those services to get around. So, historically, you know, re, as of recently, it's been an amount of around $430,000 a year that we've funded. So, they've been kind of two separate processes. The longer STF program that has their own committee, it's a five-member committee, we've had a couple staff members from Deschutes County on it, some of the nonprofit organizations have been on it, and then we have the STIF committee. And so, right now, with ODOT's consolidation process, we need to have a new set of bylaws that incorporates the rulemaking from these combined committees. And basically, and so, I was on the rulemaking advisory committee, Tammy Vanny was on it as well, so we participated in that process, provided our input in terms of how central Oregon would like to see some of these changes made. And so, at the end of the day, we kind of have, it's all going to be kind of aligning with that STIF structure and committee guidelines and the reimbursement process. So, the STF program, we just did the, the procurements a little bit different and the solicitations, that'll kind of all just be like STIF now. So, everything's kind of just moving toward that model. So, the easiest thing for us to do is just kind of revise the existing STIF bylaws to incorporate the new language from the rulemaking, and then some of the kind of previous STF components in there. So, what you have today in your packet is the revised bylaws that are redlined, and then also a revised committee roster that kind of folds together the existing STIF members who were interested in participating, and some of the STF members. And we had to take a couple off, and some of those were like some of the staff members here, like Peter Russell, who was going to defer to let the community members step up and take over. Tyler Deke from the NPO, he sits in on a lot of those meetings, so he wanted to relinquish his seat to allow some committee members who are interested in, you know, and they're representing their own communities. So, I feel like we have a really good roster. I called through all the individuals just to check in with them. A couple just wanted to kind of be off the committee, they didn't have the time, or they moved locations. Like, Kelsey no longer lives in Terrebonne, and so, she, you know, she wasn't be able to represent Terrebonne, and then, you know, she has, she can, she's only available in the early mornings as well. So, it's kind of going to be difficult for her schedule to, to attend. So, we have a, a new, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Derek.
Derek, I just wondered, Route 31, I know I was begging that it wouldn't be stopped.
Yes.
What is the status today?
Well, yeah, so it, it's, it was primarily a summer service, and all of our summer services end on Labor Day. So, we are hoping, we just rolled out an incentive program and referral program for drivers, so we are hoping to implement it back in the summer of '23. We hope to have a little bit more partnership with, with Sun River and La Pine in terms of high school students' employment. We know that the resorts struggled to find employment, which is the primary purpose of the shuttle. So, we're gearing up for the next summer season, but that is our hope. Unfortunately, we really struggled in the beginning of the summer to, to get drivers, but we're, I just told Derek, we're doing the next round of the union negotiations with the Bend labor, and hoping to recruit and retain drivers. So, it's slowly, but we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel in terms of the workforce.
Great, okay, thank you.
And was there a possibility that you might rotate in smaller buses on that route, or, or?
Yeah, that one actually has, it's an 18 passenger, it's, it's pretty small to begin with, yep.
So, what you have in front of you are the changes to the revised bylaws. This has been vetted by ODOT. We sent it to their, their team to review all the, as well as the regional transit coordinator, and they're kind of higher level staff. So, they gave us some notes, have been working with Chris Doty, he's the county's stiff administrator for the program, to review. And so, we've kind of vetted this with a couple different individuals and agencies, and are now moving it here to see if you guys had any questions or, you know, wanted to see additional revisions to the document. But if you've read through it and feel comfortable with it, you know, we would love to entertain a motion to have these approved and have the committee roster approved. We will be scheduling meetings this fall with the new committee. We're working on a new set of stiff projects for the next 23, 24 biennium. So, I also included a document that shows those funding allocations for that program, which looks like in FY '23, it's about $3,772, and FY '24, roughly that same amount. And so, you know, we see a substantial amount of funding coming in through the STIF program. It will weave in those traditional STF buckets of money. And so, our goal with our advisory committee is how we treat that, is we don't want to see those investments in our dial-a-ride system and those services for people with disabilities and older adults diminish. So, we'll do some prioritization exercises that preserve that traditional funding amount, you know, the roughly $4 and $30,000 a year, to make sure that's going toward those services aimed at, aimed at that demographic. So, we don't want to see any of those services diminished or go away, because everybody wants a new kind of shiny, you know, technology project or something like that. Those are, services are important for our community members, they're kind of the backbone of how people get to medical appointments. We've been able to utilize the stiff dollars to have free transit in addition to the COVID relief funds. We've also been using the funds to increase our driver wages. So, it's really important, you know, that these funds are in place, that we have a formal agreement between the county and COIC and the state to be able to begin our advisory committee process this fall. I think we kind of restart the clock on the term limits, so it's a new committee, it's combining two. So, we would love to see, you know, new appointments for the people getting approved, and then having their terms, you know, be able to be extended. And we did do some changes in terms of, in addition to the rulemaking language to the bylaws, that also includes some language referencing these kind of former STF projects, which is called 5310 Funding, and making sure that they're reviewing those types of projects as they come in. Also, the composition, the mandatory composition of the advisory committee has changed just a little bit, but we have that covered. You can see in the roster list, we have all the people and the representation, and we're definitely checking that box and even more in terms of ODOT statutes. And then, you know, we also allow them to attend virtually. We didn't have that in the last bylaws, but ever since COVID, that's been an important component to have. And then, you know, there are just some other minor changes that just puts a little more, less burden on the county to do some things and more effort on COIC's part. We are the delegated program administration, so we can put everything on our website, meeting minutes, notes, public notices, and you guys have the option of doing that. So, the old bylaws had you guys doing a lot of that work, but we did it anyways, and so, we just had two websites, so you could make that decision later on. If you just wanted to defer people or put the link to our website, then you don't have to take that on as, as an administrative. So, we're ready to handle all of the administrative work. The STF program traditionally was managed in-house here at Deschutes County until last year. Whitney kind of brought this forward, and then had COIC start to delegate those, and we had our first meeting last year with the committee. So, we're familiar with running those committees. You know, we're in really good shape to merge these. It'll be more efficient, you know, instead of having two committees to track and look at all the different fundings, it'll all come into one. There'll be a little more burden in the reporting side, because now everything coming from the STF side, you know, we need to report out and then do the reimbursements for. So, it's just a little bit different of how, kind of how the money works, but it's all funneled through one program, so it's just a little more efficient, I think, for, you know, your organization and our agency. So, I just wanted to see if you guys had any questions at all about the bylaws or the advisory committee roster.
I do have a question about all those buses that we were ordering.
Yep.
Have they all shown, showed up?
Some, some not. I will say, the worst example is the one we ordered for the tribes to government camp. It's been in the making for two and a half years. Ford has had issues building their chassis, which is the primary maker and model of our vehicles. So, I'd say it's a mixed bag with supply chain. I would say the majority of the vehicles that we are replacing are non-CDL, smaller vehicles in hopes of just recruiting people that do not have a CDL. So, there's been success there.
We can find drivers, right?
Yes, yes. Yep, that's the whole goal. So, I would say, right now, our fleet's about 10% non-CDL. Our goal in probably two to four years' time is to have 40 to 50%. Pretty much anything dial-a-ride, medical, small-related can be done in a non-CDL vehicle. Fixed route, big schedule, highway, transport, that will remain your larger fleet.
So, what are the largest buses? How many do they carry?
Largest bus carries 38 passengers.
38, okay.
Without standing, but they can stand, so it could fit another five or six standing.
All right.
I wanted to ask about the STF funding.
Mm-hmm.
So, merging these programs, going to track carefully to make sure that the, you know, that the level of service for, you know, those traditional STF target populations is still being maintained. Are we pretty confident that the STF funding is going to, you know, the, the STF portion of this overall pool is going to stay pretty steady as well?
Yeah, we're pretty confident in that. I mean, ODOT is about ready to announce their forecasts that include the STF projections at the end of this month. We did a training last week, and there's kind of an ongoing series of training where we're tracking that. But based on kind of how the formula funding works and the population distribution methods, we're not seeing any dramatic decreases, and that, it's just kind of rolling in that historic amount of funding into the new pot. So, you know, we're not, if, if there is some kind of alarm where we're seeing some cuts to that, we will definitely come to you and let you know. But at this point in time, we don't envision, I mean, I think over the time, if the economy does well and the payroll tax is doing well, it'll continue to grow over the years. So, that's, that's the anticipation from ODOT.
Good question, though, Commissioner Chang. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, sometimes when you put things together, some, some streams of funding disappear, so.
We also hope, and perhaps the STIF side could help fund this, as municipalities get bigger, more crowded, it gets harder for us to serve our dial-a-ride population as, you know, effec-, effectively. So, there is going to be talk of expanding boundaries, particularly in La Pine and Sisters, where you've got more rural population living off of, you know, forest roads, et cetera. So, I know after the merge, we, we may look at that so that we can continue to serve those more rural communities in and around their dial-a-ride services, so.
So, this is advisory committee bylaws. Are we replacing the STF and STIF? Are we, like, are we replacing two documents with one?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm just making sure I'm understanding.
But we're just calling it STIF, because all the new language is just using that existing STIF rules and guidelines. And in your copy, the very thick packet are the new rules highlighted in yellow that are added. So, they basically tacked on new additions, did a couple different redactions, but it's basically kind of bringing over the language from the STF into the STI program. So, we're just going to call it STIF and not think about STF anymore.
Yeah, have to review the rules, and then this document, you can see some of the same words.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, I just wanted to make sure that the statutes were all in there, the, you know, the composition of the committee. Those are kind of the important things that we need to have in there. The other things are just kind of based on our experience managing the committees over the past couple of years. Like, we extended the term limits, you know, another couple of years, because people were terming out, they wanted to still continue to be on the committee, and then they would have to basically sit out another year and then come back, and it's hard to get those people back. So, it's like, you know, our, our preference is if we have really good members that are willing to serve, doing a good job, that, you know, they should be able to serve a little bit longer before they term out. A lot of committees, particularly in transit, just don't even have any kind of limitations on them, just because it's really hard, difficult to find people. But there's enough, there's enough interest in Deschutes County where, you know, we can have some new folks coming on board, and, you know, as, as other people leave or retire, we can add them in. So, we don't have to do another recruitment process. We have enough members who wanted to stay on from both committees, that I think this reflects a really accurate description of a, of a, of a solid committee that's going to do good work for the, on behalf of the county.
So, by adopting the committee roster today as presented, we're kind of resetting some of those terms?
Yes, and then we would do, and then I have the committee, the proposed term expiration date. So, if we did the appointments, you know, this summer, those would be the terms, kind of effective, probably like January on, we'd kind of base it on the start of the next calendar year, just to allow them to have a little more time.
And then, so the document itself, the bylaws document, page three, which is 46 of our packet. In the middle, so advisory committee tasks, the advisory committee may, and then we've got the, the crossed out will. And I sometimes just see shall for some of these. So, is there? So is there, they may advise, so yeah, I mean, does that really change the, kind of the legality of what their authority is or what?
No, it doesn't. And the reason that we changed that to may is because it definitely, some of these things are just optional for the advisory committee, and most specifically, the bullet point at the end, appoint a work group to provide additional input on stuff for in the projects. That was one of the new guidelines that came out of the rules, but committees don't have to do it. So that's for like TRIMET and these really large committees where they have a lot of different jurisdictions. They could basically bring forth subgroups to talk about a particular city or a particular area or a particular demographic, and then that subgroup would have to report back to the advisory committee and then eventually the board. So it's kind of like another layer that I don't, we have the option of having that, but I don't really see it as being necessary for, to have some kind of subcommittee. And so that's one of the reasons why we changed that from may to will, and that was approved by ODOT when we sent it to them. So these are just kind of like advisory tasks that were listed for the advisory committee and not, they don't have to be like set in stone, they're not mandatory.
So it just kind of reminds me that I would love this committee and the efforts of all this transportation to set up the premier transportation option in central Oregon, and you've heard me talk like this before. I want that shiny bus where people wave at it as it's driving by, people grab their briefcase and their coffee and they jump on the bus. And, you know, what I'm seeing here, some of these definitions are, well, let's make sure we include these people, let's make sure, you know, the definition of high percentage, low-income households. It almost, it kind of goes down a negative path. We've got to figure out what that positive path looks like because then all of a sudden you have a growing system, which gets exciting to be, you know, participating in.
And I'll say.
Tourists and working adults and the whole deal, so.
And I'll say, you know, OSU, City of Bend, ourselves, there's definitely, what do they call it, mobility ecosystem? So there's some visionary language and movement outside of this type of protocol that's part of our committee work as well.
Yeah, so as I say, hopefully there's a, you know, exciting part of this too, you know, and the vision to get people from southern Deschutes County into Sun River for working, it's great, and I advocate for it too. The bus is empty sometimes, you know, and I have met people that, oh, I needed that bus. I had somebody ask me, why isn't the bus there? But that was the one person that was riding the bus, and it's just awkward when it just doesn't catch, you know, a few people riding.
Yeah, and it was, it was challenging this summer. You know, we were working with the Chamber of Commerce and the partners in Sun River a lot to stand up this project, Lapine Senior Center. We did a couple of events there. We were really hoping that Sun River had twenty individuals on international visas that were going to be living in those low-income apartments off Draftor Road, kind of across from Wickham Junction. So we had a stop location there, had the schedule going there, but the apartments didn't get finished in time, and so they had to move all of them into Sun River. So we would have had like twenty captive riders on our bus.
Yeah.
And then having.
Really too bad, isn't it?
It was really unfortunate. So we worked with them hand in hand to try to make that happen, and they were delayed about a month. So it was just too long for them to wait. So the stop didn't come to fruition. We didn't have that built-in ridership, so we just, you know, and they were getting some gas cards out for Sun River employees, and that was kind of hard, you know, for our message, it wasn't, you know, the best way to promote transit. So we just didn't get that jump in ridership, even though we really promoted it and did a lot of work behind the scenes and, you know, when things like that happen and we don't have enough drivers, we have to look to the lowest ridership route.
And that transit center in downtown is coming together. You know, I know the excavation and the curbs and some of the paving's happening right now, so.
Yes.
In fact, yeah, it's probably progressing quickly. I haven't seen it in a week or two, but I bet it's really rocking right now.
Yeah, and I believe Deschutes County STF dollars helped Jeff, the city manager, complete some of the more required capital improvements in the station. So he was, he was happy to see that happen.
So Derek, I noticed that Kelsey's gone.
Yes.
And we don't have anyone from Terrebonne.
We don't. And that's okay from a statute, you know, we do, Ken Thorpe is going to be retiring next year from Lapine, so he's wanting to give up his seat at that point. And in the interim, we'll be doing some recruitment in Terrebonne to, because we already have a lot of Lapine representation.
We do, we have three.
Jamie Donahue is coming over from the STF program. She's the manager of the Lapine Senior Center, so she agreed to be on the committee. And so we have a little bit of over-representation from Lapine, so we're looking to then replace Ken with someone from Terrebonne. I just need some time to find someone in Terrebonne. It's a small community, and you guys know of anyone who might be interested, we'd love to reach out and kind of, you know, have them start to attend meetings, and then when Ken retires, he wants to be off the committee, and so that would happen around next summer.
Okay, so they could actually start attending the meetings then?
They could, yeah. It's their public meeting, it's anyone, anyone who's interested can attend.
All right, great.
Yep.
Well, if you're looking at doing the Crooked River bus route, isn't that something that you said you're?
We are, yes. We're starting it on September sixth, the day after Labor Day. So we've had an influx of non-CDL hires. We did a huge radio promotion ad. We do a kind of a bus sponsorship campaign where people put ads on our buses and we trade the radio stations for it. So on the backs of the buses, that's why you see all the area radio stations, and so we have another set of ads going out this week, and that's been effective. We've got four new drivers in the last, I believe, three weeks. A lot of them are non-CDL, you know, so they wouldn't be able to drive the Lapine route without, you know, using a smaller vehicle. But as we train them, it takes about six to eight weeks to train them to get their CDLs, then they can start to move in to start driving the larger fleet. Now, we just don't have enough of the non-CDL buses right now. That's what we're waiting to kind of get those in.
Do you have some more on order then?
Yep.
Yep, we do, yeah. And so that's the issue. We have a really small percentage of our fleet that's non-CDL. So as we grow that fleet and we have the new non-CDL drivers coming in, those will match up. We'll be able to kind of match the routes, you know, that don't need a huge bus, you know, that just have four or five riders on them, to be able to start to weave those in and be able to provide those services.
Will that bus stop in Terrebonne on its way to Redmond then or not?
We, not the current schedule, but once ODOT redoes the couplet, then there will be a safe place for us to turn in.
No couplet.
Or, I think it's, I don't know what the terminology is.
Terribone.
Yes.
Double roundabout.
Yes.
The Terribones.
Got it, that's clever. Yeah, so once that's installed, similar to Tumalo, once the circle goes in, we'll be having an established stop for us, both northbound and southbound.
Okay. So do we have any further questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval, the consolidated STIF and STF program bylaws and committee roster as presented. Back in.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of Justice?
Thank you.
Just the branding effort.
So I know everybody's been really liking that charcoal gray. I don't know if you've seen those vans, but.
Oh, yes, I guess I have, yeah. I didn't know that that was, yeah.
That's some of the new branding, and that will transfer over to our fixed route and larger buses as well. They hide the dirt pretty well, and they will.
Ah, hiding the dirt.
That's the important thing, hide the dirt.
Well, there's some brand in there somewhere where it's like, hey, I got to go get on that bus, you know, something that's going to draw people to it, whatever that is, someday it'll happen.
Yeah, we're working on some branding for the Crooked River Ranch Service and having our designer start to think through some ad campaigns for our own buses. So instead of, you know, doing advertising on those for other entities, we'll be doing our own advertising, and so we're going to have them come up with some kind of clever slogans and some, you know, additions to the logo. We also have mobility hubs on the horizon. We've done a lot of outreach, probably seen it in the paper and in the news, a huge public engagement process. We did like eleven events, got a lot of community input. That study was funded by, that was a TGM grant, but the funding for the development of mobility hubs and actually purchasing land is through this current round of STIF funding. So it's a couple million dollars in there to help us develop those. So I think once we have mobility hubs, then we can start to really kind of remarket our brand and attract the choice riders, have some other options and amenities like park-and-ride locations there, you know, for example, looking at the Lapine Center, you know, that will become kind of a future mobility hub. Also out in Sisters with the purchase of the new Forest Service property, looking to put it, eventually put a transit stop there. So this model that we developed in Ben will be useful for how we implement mobility hubs in some of the smaller communities, and I think they can be as equally successful, especially with kind of a tourist base, you know, people coming to park and ride and go to the mountain, things like that. So it has a lot of potential for future growth and awareness of our services, just making it easier to get around.
I'm just wondering, with the recreation bus routes this summer, what are the numbers looking like compared to last year? Do we have any?
We're more than triple and quadruple our numbers from last year because we still were under that restriction, kind of the six feet apart on the bus. That was eliminated at the end of last summer, which allows us to just, the Ride the River is through the roof right now, particularly with the high temperatures. So I think just in July, we serve thirty thousand rides on Ride the River.
Yeah.
And we haven't seen big smoke or fire events here, knock on wood again.
I'm real wood.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that's, that's a reality in our world.
Yeah, I think we did fifteen hundred passengers a day on a Saturday, which I think broke a record. So it's just an amazing service, helps keeps a lot of the folks from bringing two cars and trying to shuttle. I mean, it's a nightmare trying to find parking and do that, so I think it's a, it's a good system, and it's, I think, system like our recreation system really kind of gets our name out there and helps people understand, oh, there's a good transit system. So we try to really promote that and work with Ben Park and Rack. That's kind of part of our messaging going forward.
Well, it was appropriate to have you guys on the agenda today because I just, at eleven-thirty, had my Central Oregon Safe Travel Subcommittee meeting through COAC.
Oh, great.
And hearing about them, and the fatality numbers for our region have gone down this year.
Have they, really?
Yes. I believe the total is maybe seven to date, and, you know, in 2020, the number was way over the top. So this year, yeah, we're at seven, counting Crook, Deschutes, and Jefferson. We're way, because of congestion, it slows people down.
Right.
And in 2020, there weren't that many people driving, and, yeah, the fatalities were really high for our region.
Yeah, and I think with ODOT and the city doing a lot of the crosswalk improvements and the curb ramps, and I think that's going to be really helpful, and just all the new roundabouts and doing kind of the bike, the protective bike lane and the Wilson Roundabout, I mean, all those things are, I think, really advantageous to helping reduce conflicts between motorists and people out riding, walking, and rolling.
And I'll just add one last thing. We're hoping to hear back from the federal government. We went after a particular grant for transit in the parks, and we're hoping to secure six new vehicles for the Mount Bachelor service this fall. We're excited for the vehicles. We're going to try to procure, they have the underbelly where we can store ski equipment and not a rackety trailer on the back, so that we could potentially gain more ridership on that service. And so hopefully in about two to three months, if we're awarded, Mount Bachelor will have a brand-new fleet, which takes a beating because of the weather and the road, so I'm thrilled for that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Great. What size of bus do you guys?
Those are going to be big ones.
The thirty-eight?
They're, we're looking at the Thomas bus. They kind of look like a bug. They've got like the antler-looking, you know, I can't describe it, but they're kind of cartoonish.
These things.
They've got, you know, the turn signal lights in the front, and they're built out of Canada. Yeah, and they're just, they're just heavy duty to handle the roughness of that route, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's hope. That sounds like an excellent idea.
Yes.
The, my understanding is the river, the river shuttle is revenue positive. Is the, is the, is the Bachelor shuttle revenue positive as well?
No, so Ride the River is revenue positive. Mount Bachelor is heavily subsidized by Powder and Mount Bachelor, I'll see. Yeah, just because of the distance and the wear and tear.
And it's good for them because their parking otherwise would be a nightmare.
Correct. It's mainly, I mean, from six to eight AM, it's all of their employees, so.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Nice to see you in person.
You're good.
Great. So now we have other items.
Tomorrow, I'm going to go to Salem for the State Interoperability Executive Council. It's a quarterly meeting, public safety and ODOT and all the different agencies involved with that. And I'm on that board representing Association of Morgan County, so it'll be a trip to Salem. I haven't done that in a couple of years either, really.
Okay. And I just mentioned that we did have that, the safety meeting that had been talked about for quite some time, and I found out that Fire, Frey Road and Highway twenty have been added. They've applied for a grant to do some work there on a left-turn lane because of apparently accidents happening out there. So that was something new today. Bob Townsend was brought up in his discussion. Oh, and Roku is actually in central Oregon. They are working on doing a documentary on log houses through Hasbro to focus on Lincoln Logs. So it could be some interesting, they may do something in southern Oregon, but, yeah, they're, they're in town and they're, they're working on this documentary, so you just never know.
So one more item is a proposed proclamation for Labor Day to be done maybe next Wednesday. I think that'd be the day. I have it on my desk and I didn't even bring it down, so.
I did.
That's just some bullet points that I gathered and put in there. This is a proposal, today it's a proposal for us, you know, the three commissioners and anybody who wants to even include content there. So that's not a final version, that's just a formatted, bullet-pointed, started version. You know, I've, we've had some requests by construction trades about apprenticeship programs, so, you know, I'm not opposed to mentioning that. I am proposing that we do a simple proclamation because there's requests for, you know, the apprenticeship program percentages for county projects, so I'm just, you know, hesitant to add more to our to-do list as a county while we're doing construction, capital projects. So as I say, thanks for, I see that was in our mailboxes, mine's on my desk, but if you have any thoughts or feedback, we can kind of mature it for next week.
Okay, and I know that the Cutting Horse Association asked us to do a proclamation for their huge event at the fairgrounds. So I, I did print that, but I didn't bring that one down. I believe that's in September.
If we could talk through this one first and then.
Okay. Sure. What would you like to say, Commissioner Chang?
I'm supportive of doing a Labor Day proclamation. The content in here that's specific to the building trades, I think maybe I would, I would like to see that kind of pulled out of the proclamation and kind of done, it's, I think it's very important and valuable to bring some focus to the trades, but it's also, you know, Labor Day, when it was originally developed, was not just for the building trade, so, I mean, we want to recognize all the working people in the, in the community. So I would support a proclamation being more general and then some kind, you know, maybe during the introductory comments for the, before the proclamation, talking about the trades in specific.
And as I say, I mean, that was truly, it was bullet points, it was a word document, then it was formatted, now it's been shared, so it can be edited very much so, so it's just.
Yeah, no, but I think all the content in here is good.
And this is actually when my great, great-great-grandfather came to Oregon, so eighteen eighty.
And it isn't, yeah, it'll be interesting, it'll be a good discussion because, you know, the bullet point in there.
I'm sure he was working twenty hours a day.
Oregon was the first state to adopt this before the federal government did, so it's interesting when you, we'll learn some history, too.
Great.
So that's available for, you know, just proposed edits and we can work with whoever.
So we could come back on Wednesday regarding this?
Well, we'll bring it back for, you know, proposed adoption next week. Just wanted to get it out there to start.
Okay, all right.
And then on the, on the Cutting Horse event, I, I, I'm not sure, to me, whether that rises to the level of a proclamation. I think it's very worthwhile to mention that during, you know, commissioner comments during other items or, you know, at some other point during the, during the meeting, but typically for proclamations or resolutions, I feel like we're focusing on a kind of a community cause necessarily, and I feel like. a kind of a, a community cause necessarily, and I feel like-
We could open up, yeah.
We, you know, for, for this, you know, for the, the, the Cutting Horse event, it's, it's sort of like, it's, we're, we're doing a plug, like a, you know, marketing or promotional plug, and that's, that's great, but I, I don't necessarily feel like it rises to the level of proclamation. So I, I would prefer to see it brought up in a meeting in a different, in a different way.
Well, the interesting thing is Saturday on the Cowboy Channel, they had a Million Dollar Horse event in Las Vegas. It was a million dollars, and it sure would be fun to have something like a million dollars here in Deschutes County at some point in time, so.
But I support-
I know this isn't a million dollars, but it's definitely, it's big business.
I support mentioning and promoting it. As I say, a proclamation may not be the right level for it, and then maybe there's another vehicle where we just, acknowledgement or, you know, maybe it's even-
Do we ever do press releases on something like that? I know it's, it's going out to, you know, there'll be people here from all over the country.
I mean, I would picture the, the organizers of the event doing the, doing the press release. I mean, if they wanted to get a vote from Commissioner DeR, like, and include that, I think that's great, but I, my concern is, we have a lot of events that happen in our community, and if we entertained proclamations for each one of them, it would, it could, it could take up a lot of airtime. So I, I just, you know, if it's, if it's not something that, that, you know, like the fair, that is a county event, and if it's not, you know, for a community cause that we're really, we really, really, really want to bring attention to, not necessarily from a marketing perspective, that would be my preference, that we, we sort of drew a line there between event promotion and, and proclamations and, and media releases from the county.
Just our typical practice with Fair and Expo, and I would want to confirm the nuts and bolts of this with Jeff, but at a high level, is that they have a standard process, I believe, for every event that gets booked, and I believe press releases do fall on the event coordinator's side, not on the county's side. There are certain things that Fair and Expo does in terms of listing on their website, and I think there's some social media posts that are kind of part of that set and standard process, but I don't believe we issue specific event press releases. Those generally come out from event organizers directly.
Okay, thank you, Whitney.
Yep.
Thank you for that. I just remembered, next year, when we want to promote the 4-H kids, that they actually get promoted, you know? That was really, the program, the number of kids there with their horse had, was in half what it had been in 19. So I, I, as someone who grew up doing 4-H for 10 years, I feel like, you know, more promotion of our 4-H program would be greatly appreciated. And I know a lot of parents talk to me about that, so.
It had its own slide at the state of the county, you know, the status of it.
That was, I know, I know, and people were like, oh, and it got quoted in the paper too. So thank you very much. No, it was great, and I do realize that, yeah, there's lots of things out there, but I am really happy that we have been able to rebrand our grounds for more horse activities that weren't here maybe in 2016, 17, 18. So they are coming back. Any other items, for other items?
None for me.
Okay, I see you, Eric. Or do we, are you going to executive, or is this regulated?
This is another, other item.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Last week, the, the board received an email from a resident near China Hat Road. She was expressing concerns about houselessness population predominantly on US Forest Service Road. Commissioner DeBon asked staff to draft a response. I sent a draft response to the board last week, and just happy to make any changes. Or I guess the, the first question is, is, does the board want a response from the board or individual commissioners? And then if the response is from the board, there's been a draft provided for discussion.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I didn't prep for bringing it here today, but I, it was really just for us basically to communicate amongst ourselves, too, because we can all go talk to each person or, or any group there. It was just, looked like a pretty concerted effort to say we want some information, so it's our opportunity to communicate.
Well, according to Colleen's comments a week or two ago, we're probably up to 400 people at those camps, and I know that community is concerned, and I do know that each campground was supposed to have their own fire extinguisher from the Forest Service, but the question remains, and that's what I asked Sally Butts, who is there legal, from Glenn Casamas's office in Portland, who is going to get those people out when, if we have a fire at 2:00 in the morning? How are we going to safely get those people out of our, our county? And so that, that issue always, I think, weighs heavily. If the wind is blowing like it was on September 7th of 2020, and it was blowing 70 miles an hour from the northeast, it, it's not going, you know, you've always got to be prepared. So what is, what is the plan? Now, Sally Butts said that they always have worked so well together with our sheriff. Well, the question is, does the sheriff have that kind of capacity to, to make sure, because I know that they've really, they've moved in, you know, a lot deeper in the forest. Eric, do you have any feedback on that?
I don't. I'd be happy to reach out to the sheriff's office with that question.
Well, a couple of things. We have the joint office administrator person coming on. We do have, you know, kind of commanding, control, coordination efforts coming together for the Central Oregon message, because we know that push people from one place are going to pop up somewhere else. You know, the displacing of, you know, any, any group is going to put them somewhere. So we're starting to get to that point. In fact, remember, I'm talking like, we want to turn the corner, and we, we don't, probably don't have that corner defined yet, but we're working towards getting to a point. So I have very generic statements there, but I mean, that's the big picture right now.
And I mean, I, you know, kind of following that thought, I, I think we do want to emphasize to people that if you're going to clear people from a, an encampment area, an unauthorized encampment area, if you want that to be effective, they really, there really needs to be places for people to go and pathways for them to get out of homelessness, and just, you know, kind of give them a long list of, of the investments that we've made along those lines that are creating those pathways and those places for people to go. You know, it's clearly not enough yet, or, you know, how, you know, we haven't found a silver, silver bullet, but we're doing a lot of things. And I, I think it's important to, to just convey that we are, we are doing, we, you know, we are making efforts, we are doing at least some of our part to create those pathways out of homelessness and establish authorized, appropriate places for people to go.
Yes, in fact, the, the draft response talks about the pilot program to remove abandoned vehicles, some cleanup efforts, working with the county's homeless outreach services team host out of the Health Department. And then the draft email talks about the creation of the office, coordinated houseless response office, and then there's two attachments that list the county's involvement and support for affordable housing, local shelters, land donations for affordable housing. So that's all contained in the draft response.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm, so I guess, as I say, it was just an opportunity to say, you know, give me a list, and now all three of us are talking about it, you know, I could send this as a response, or I don't know if we all want to, you know, do it individually also, but, I mean, I'm offering to do that, to get engaged with it, because it's kind of the beginning. It's another little engagement, you know, because the community, we know the community's upset, and we know the community, the houseless community is growing. So acknowledging all that, and then I can offer this response as a starting point for the next cycle of communication.
I mean, on, what was it, April 6th or something? I think I got an email an hour from people in China Hat.
Mm-hmm.
And I sent them on, all of them on to Glenn Casamas, because it's like, this is, people are really nervous, and now the Arnold Water people are incredibly nervous because of the grass, because of the rain in April, May, and June. Now the grass is way taller, and the water is turned off. People ask if we could get the water turned back on, but there's no water to turn on. So hopefully people are mowing that flammable grass at a cooler part of the day. I, I know several people that have been doing that, so that's, that's the good news. But they're, you know, they're right in that neighborhood.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll take it from here, and we'll go back and-
All right, let me know if you would like any help with, with any updates to the draft, and meanwhile, I'll check with the sheriff's office, emergency response.
Right.
Nathan Garabee.
I mean, I was thinking, okay, so what if we had like some buses that could be like parked south, you know, but that isn't even enough, and they couldn't get in there. It's, it's really, when you, when you have seen the documentary about Paradise, and you realize that there were children that were already at their school that morning when that fire came over the, the mountain, you know, to Paradise so quickly, it, it makes you realize you, we really have to think ahead. So if you can contact the sheriff's office, that would be great.
All right, I will, and I'll forward the response to the, to the full board.
Thank you, Harry.
You're welcome.
Can I just be clear on what, what we're discussing here? So Eric's working on drafting up a unified statement from the board, and then Commissioner DeBon, you're, you're saying you're going to send that on to people?
Responding to the email, yeah, so you're, you're asking, you know, is this from the board or from Commissioner DeBon, you're saying?
Yeah.
I can say it's from me, or either way, really, it's, because as I say, anybody's, anybody can, you know, talk to us individually, so this will just be your response.
I mean, I, I think there's a lot of value in there, there being a statement from the full board, but I'm just trying to get clear on how we all have a chance to review that and, and, you know, give it the thumbs up before it goes out from the full board, or-
Well, Wednesday, yeah.
We could come back on Wednesday. I, I sent, it was, on Friday, I sent it to the, the board on email. I'm, I know you get buried with email, but I'm happy to-
It was like a four o'clock on Friday, but I did see it. Yeah, I saw it. Thank you, Eric.
I'm happy to come back on Wednesday if, if you want, if you would like more time to review the draft.
Remember last year, August of 2021, we must have had 50 people in this room from China Hat. They brought pictures, they told us their story, so.
And there's also, I mean, this is the opportunity, as, as the summer winds down and we're going into winter, because winter can be very dangerous also. This is that transition period where if we're going to do anything, you know, as a community, not just board of commissioners, but as a community, now is the time to, you know, make some changes on what the, you know, expectations are out there, or what the enforcement is going to be, or what services are offered, whatever we're going to do.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll do it Wednesday then? Thank you.
Very good.
I would just tag on lightly to that item. The board, I think, over the weekend received an additional email related to the same topic. So once the board approves the standard response, staff may use it as appropriately,